Your yellow and his name will be purple.
Oh, nice.
I have two more meetings. One same person. Because most sessions are for salaries or not salaries. I'll beat you guys up. One same company. John. Yeah.
That one just returned it back.
Oh, you got the orange.
How long do you need to wait here? How long do you need to wait here?
I want ten minutes. What it is.
Woo!
Where do you live?
Brazil.
Oh, Brazil, okay. Yeah, you're good now. Yeah, you're good now.
I don't think we can. No, what if you take this as sugar free? No. Well, I have more needs. I just have this. Anyone want this is zero sugar. It's like for keto diets.
Zero sugar, I didn't say I need that.
I'm just saying I don't have enough water, but I could get more of these.
I don't have that. I'll take the blue. Give me the big one.
You got more?
Yeah, but it's hot. I'll share with Cory.
I could go get more of these keto ones. They're absolutely zero sugar, zero carbs.
Yeah, I'll try one of those.
You want zero sugar, zero carbs, absolutely. Yeah.
Because we can't copy. I don't know. None of us can.
Yeah. Oh, you want a paper copy?
Please. I couldn't make it download to print.
The only, let me go to the drinks. The only that I can do is take. I have to physically connect because my, this wants to connect with to the board office.
Oh, because I knew Mary said she had an issue with it.
Yeah, this one.
I didn't know it had a neighbor copied with you.
Are the goals one of those files kind of like how your contract was where you can like screenshot it?
No, no, it's open. Rod, Rod sent it to all you guys and it's in the board book for me.
Okay, I didn't know any of the file we had was different.
I'm just gonna run to get here. Joe, do you want one too?
One what?
It's, it's like a keto, zero sugar, zero carbs.
No, I'm all set. Thank you for asking.
He's gonna make paper copies because none of us could. So it'll be just a minute.
Here.
Please, up here.
Joe, just pineapple.
Oh, no, I'm all set. Thank you for asking.
Mary, do you want pineapple or?
I'm fine.
I got this.
It was not bad.
I'm good, thank you. The, the, they have challenges.
Was it daddy daughter dance, you know? Laila Elizabeth came away and it was like the daddy daughter dance.
On my nails though.
No, you want, I'll bring my, I'll bring my paints.
Love it.
Okay. Thank you.
Very cool.
That's where all my videos. How much are they? I would probably three hundred and fifty euros. Really sugar banny? It's sugar free. I don't know. Sugar free five hundred. Then they've got another people on here who's eating. I know it on the dock. There's no way it tastes like that.
Ready to try and get started.
Get that cup right here.
She's so well shared.
Okay, well, it's not.
All right, that's mine. Okay. I'm gonna open the special board of education meeting. Today is Monday, April twenty fifth. At Wilkinson High School. Call to order is pledge of allegiance and I will do it. Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next is the infamous public fundamentals.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, excuse me. Go ahead. Crystal Beaver. Absent with notice. Rebecca Shambles, here. Mark Holton. Absent with notice. Didn't you say Mark Holton? But I heard you say Mark. Cindy Holder.
Here.
Barbara Castle. Absent with notice. Deborah Ott.
Here.
Gloria Thompson.
Here.
We have Cora. Public input is fundamental to the operation of Madison District Public Schools. Our public has an opportunity to speak at a local education meeting. A period of time known as public comment aside aside. At each meeting to give parents and other citizens a chance to speak directly to the board about school related topics. Anyone wishing to speak to the board must fill out a request form. Give it to the board secretary before the meeting begins. Comments are limited to three minutes. School employees will not use this forum to discuss job related topics. The Board of Education accepts comments made during public comment from anyone who follows these guidelines. Public comment is one of the many information sources that the board uses before making decisions in the best interest of the children who attend Madison District Public Schools. The board also works with the district staff to address citizens' questions and concerns. Did we get any requests? Hearing none, we will move on. The discussion tonight is the superintendent goals. And I did send via email and I know Mr. Abdullah had his done as well. What the board had agreed upon last year. They were accepted May third, twenty twenty one. So it is more than time that we need to get back to updating our goals. Looking at what can come off of this list. What maybe as a group we think needs to be added. So that this can be current and useful for not only the school board but for Mr. Abdullah. Because this is a part of his evaluation. It needs to be clear for him as well. What it is that the expectations are from this school board. So I guess last year we had to do it with Latimer. We're gonna try to do it tonight without him and see if we can make any progress. And if not, then I guess, you know, maybe we will have to resort to that. But I'm hoping that all of us can do our due diligence, be respectful and still move ahead. So with that and with the public not having anything in front of them. Goal area, the first one was communication. Improve communication both internally and externally. Continue newsletters to various groups. Utilize town hall and public forum. Utilize social media. Develop marketing and communication to improve student enrollment. Does anybody here think that that needs to come off the list? Trustee Chamberlain, go ahead.
Are we able to add to that?
Yeah, first of all, I think we need to go through and see if anything we feel has been achieved that we can take off the list.
Okay.
And then we'll open it for discussion, okay?
Yes, ma'am. Perfect.
Okay, so anybody here have any of those that we think we can take off the list?
Madam President?
Trustee that.
Social media can be removed. The school's Facebook page has been awesome lately.
Does anybody have any input on that? Do we agree?
Disagree?
Trustee Chamberlain, go ahead.
I'm just wondering if we take it off, are we saying that we're okay with where it's at? Or would we leave it on and then say we wanted to continue forward? Like it's been doing great for the past, what, five, six weeks? Would we go and leave it on and see if it continues to improve? Or like, it's my first time doing like a goal review, so I'm not sure.
Trustee, what your intent was, you think we've retained that goal? Or keep it on so that we can continue to utilize it or?
We can keep it on, but I don't think it should be one of the superintendent's top priorities. I think it's been mastered. But if it's the will of the board to keep it on, just as a reminder.
And that's what we're here for, just to have something, some talk and discussion, so.
I'm okay with either way. I just, I would like to see it continuing. It has been doing great. I think we're at like six hundred hits.
So maybe we could add and continue to utilize social media. Would that be a matter?
Yeah.
Would that be middle of the road that everybody can agree to?
Yes, I just don't want to see it drop off. I want it to continue.
Okay. Mr. Abdullah, do you have any objections to that?
I'm just jotting down some notes right now, just gathering information, jotting down.
We aren't voting on anything tonight.
Yeah, I'm just taking some notes.
Okay. But we all can, at least those of us that are here today, can agree that maybe that might change.
Madam President?
Trustee Holton, go ahead.
Okay, it says continue in the letter, so we're gonna keep it on there to continue. Right, okay. And social media is the same thing. We're gonna leave it on to continue. It's not there. It's a goal. It's just, we're gonna continue going.
Got it. Okay, anybody have any input in the town hall slash public forum? I don't know that we have. Mr. Abdullah, do you think that we have used that?
I think that was when we were trying to inform the public about infrastructure and the bonds. And we wanted to inform the town hall. Because if you look at town hall public forum along with facilities where investigate financial options for projects and sinking fund or bond. I think those two went together when we're exploring which direction to go before the bond got approved.
Any other input? So do we wanna leave it? Take it out? Continue?
Maybe should have left it in case people ask questions.
Trustee Thompson, good point. Just asking for everybody's input. Trustee Chamberlain, go ahead.
I would like to see it left in, hopefully maybe to increase enrollment doing like open houses, town halls to bring people in the community. Real estate can do great in that area, so maybe some families have moved in, so those could be beneficial.
And so add the word continue or leave it the way it is?
Leave it good.
Leave it, leave it the way it is seems to be okay. Last one, develop marketing, communication to improve student enrollment. What do we have to say about that?
Madam President, we need to do something about increasing enrollment. I don't care where we put it. I would concur.
Trustee Chamberlain?
I was just gonna say the same thing. I think we need to continue to push for enrollment.
I mean, we really need to come up with some new ideas. What we're doing is obviously not working.
Like two meetings ago, Dr. Hill said that they had some new ideas they were working on. And I know Mr. Abdullah had told me that he had some things coming up. So I'm not sure if like now he would want to tell us or anything. But I do think that my understanding is they have a brainstorming to come up with some new ideas.
Mr. Abdullah, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
So what I was trying to do, and I believe I shared this with my weekly updates. Website being extremely old and outdated. Anyone that looks at our website is just like, you know. So I do have a chance to do a one minute video that I'm trying to coincide with the opening of the new website. I kinda have the template already. I'm in the process of transferring. I wanted to go hand in hand. Basically, the video clip along with all the social media feeds would be into our website. And our website will now turn into a scrolling straight up and down instead of the different tabs. If you're on an iPad and sometimes, you know how we have an advertisement? Instead of going page by page, now we just kinda scroll down. Well, my intentions are to develop a website almost like that where you have a running feed of all the social media. Instagram, Instagram, Facebook, all the different schools ones. I did, restarted Twitter so I could put that in there. Just so things could have a running theme for them. And then a video clip, almost like a commercial, that I would put out thirty seconds of it on Facebook. And then the full video would be on our website. I am partnering with a marketing firm now on that. This would go along with the targeted flyers. So we do targeted flyers to Pontiac. I've not done targeted flyers to Detroit area, but I'm not opposed to it if, if we could get a bus load there. I know other districts do that as well. We had kindergarten roundup. We, we started advertising, so that's looking good. I agree that, you know, enrollment and positive, positive trends tend to feed off each other. So we're almost at a thousand followers now on Facebook. And, and want to just keep it going. And people are sharing our links and they're sharing our videos. And I agree that we should continue. I mean, whether it's written or not, I know what's working. I'm gonna keep doing what's working. If we're getting positive results, we're gonna do it. So I'm not opposed to any other ideas, but those are the two things that I'm working on right now. The one minute video clip and then the new district website, trying to roll that out.
Madam President? I think I brought up a couple that's been a while. Where over in Sinclair Shores, they have, we have a sign for the bus riders on the fence. These were big final signs on the fences at every school for enrollment.
I think that's a good idea. I mean, if that's what you guys want.
Throughout our district.
Anybody else? Trustee Chamberlain, go ahead.
Have we, we just bought a house last year. We bought it, we went through a bid after bid. Before we completed our bid in, at the end of the day that we looked at the house, the house was already got an offer taken. So I know that a lot of real estate in this area is changing hands over the past year. Are we thinking about doing like open houses, trying to bring families in, have like fun events in the different buildings? I know other districts do that. And to do more local targeting as well as Pontiac and Detroit. And then I know that it was recommended that potentially we look at getting like a booth at Trail Toons or Juneteenth to kind of also be supportive of those events while promoting the district. And that could be like local targeting.
And then another thing I guess I'm gonna go to the relevant room. Improve communication internally and externally. I think we all need to work on that. But I think it needs to, to be able to point. Everybody's, questions are answered. The sentence may start with, I feel that this is a, whatever. Business part or, but I think everybody's question marks. Does anybody have any input with that? Agree, disagree?
I agree. And so Crystal and I did some training recently and they were talking about when doing goals, to have a high performing school, the goals have to be measurable. So if we're doing something with internal communication, there should be timelines. So it should say, respond to every email within twenty four hours. If it's a subject that you need more time on, at least respond saying, I've received it. You know, I'll get back to you in the next forty eight hours, or that's gonna take me a week. But that, by putting a timeline on there, it makes it more of a measurable thing. So it's not perception or opinion when it comes time for evaluation. It's fact, the date, the time of standing.
So anybody else have input? Can we look at adding that? Response within twenty four hours for every question?
Can I, Madam President?
Absolutely, trustee.
Can I add to the other room, as you say? I know Rebecca talks about putting a timeline to answer. But shouldn't we also have a basis to our emails? That if it's, if they're not, not if they're not answerable, but if it doesn't pertain to what's going on?
I guess my point was, just for clarification, maybe I didn't state it as clearly as I should. I think all of our questions are legitimate. Some are smaller and some are bigger.
Okay.
And I just would like to, for all of us to feel that we're each getting a response. And trustee Chamberlain is right. Part of what we need to do is we're looking for these goals. And what was stressed is that we need to have it linked to timeframes for everybody's help. That way we know what the expectation is and Mr. Abdullah knows what the expectation is. And it may be, you know, I can't do it right now, but I will do that too, so we know it's been done. Does anybody disagree? Have something they want to add or delete? Mr. Abdullah?
I would just say, maybe if you put a caveat in there with normal business hours, it's just a weekend. Or if, you know, if.
I have absolutely no problem with that.
If I'm on vacation or anything like that, or, you know. But I have no problem responding, even if it requires more time.
Okay, so I'm gonna make sure we get this concise for you and for us.
Okay, so it's gonna be business hours?
Whatever custom within.
Normal business hours.
Twenty four hours during normal business hours.
That's reasonable. I like that.
Seven eight hands and.
Okay, well, normal business.
Yeah, yeah, perfect, perfect.
All right, response for every question by board member. Within twenty four hours during normal business hours. Does anybody have anything to add? Or do we think that that's concise enough? I think that's a good one that we can forget. Getting, and obviously we will send this along with to the other two board members that are here now.
So you did say it's okay to say received, but it'll take more time to gather the information.
Indeed, that's the case, obviously.
Some stuff could be simple, but if it's, Mr. Abdullah, can you, you know, give us a running tab of where we are? It might take, you know.
And, right, but it's, I guess, we're still not individually responsible to make sure it comes.
Sure.
Okay. Anything else that we want to add for communication? Hearing none, move on. Facilities. Improve facilities across the district. Develop facilities committee process, including citizens. Utilize committee process to develop project list. Investigate financing options for projects such as sinking fund or bond. Develop timeline for improvements and other funding options if needed. Let's see you guys on this section.
Madam President?
Trustee that.
I believe we can to leave three and four. I believe we can leave three and four. Since we successfully passed a bond. Maybe not sinking fund, but the worry of the bond. Just well, the timeline, that's all covered.
I'm sorry, can you tell me what three and four are?
Oh, I'm gonna read them again. Okay, three is investigate financing options for projects such as sinking fund or bond. And the fourth is develop timeline for improvements and other funding options if needed. So because the bond's been passed, I think removing three makes sense.
And we could also keep in there. You know, I'm saying, we could keep in there sinking fund in the back of the, back of the book. Okay, but if it ever came down to that. I think the bond's gonna...
Trustee Chambliss, go ahead.
Sorry. No, I'm sorry, I was just shaking my head that I agreed with her. I think this one we've actually done really well on. I would like to see a timeline for improvement so we know a little bit more of like when to expect like projects to be like done. Just, it's kind of like a hierarchy. You got disapproved, we're doing great, we're working on this. It's like, show what we're doing, show the positives. Really brag about even the smallest things. You know, the high school got new doors, or whatever, I'm just making that up. But like, you know, just give examples and really show off what we're doing. Because if people look us up online, there's a lot of negative there. So maybe if the positive is sprinkled in with like, "Hey, you know, in April of '22, you know, we got all new windows, the lead," or whatever it's gonna be, but the plan is like brag about the good stuff too.
Okay, so to be in the three, three and four for now can be moved or removed?
Madam President?
Mr. Duhon, go ahead.
Number two, the project list?
Yes.
If you recall, we only did those things that were highlighted by SETSEC. That's what we ran on the bond, that's what... So the project list involving a committee, I mean, that was before the bond. We told the community, the taxpayers, we're only addressing SETSEC and that's all we're doing. And so I think two, we can't deviate and create our own project list now. So I would suggest that you remove that to allow more confidence on taxpayers saying, "Hey, you guys ran on this, we gave you this, nothing else."
Okay. Any objections?
Nope.
I think typically when, because you ran on an infrastructure bond. So when you do committee, if you're trying to do facelift and edifying, you went purely on infrastructure. We did not do, Phil and Wilson, we said, "Hey, we got all these mechanical issues. These roof issues, SETSEC highlighted it, independent agency highlighted it, and that's what we did." So we didn't have, we did do a walkthrough, if you remember that. That was not successful, but we did open our doors to people. And we showed them our needs and the taxpayers approved that, so we didn't have a committee.
So are we maybe in agreement that all four of these can be replaced with maybe something a little more updated? Because we still will have facility needs. The bond will be taken care of and be governed by an independent person that we hired, so...
What about putting in there?
First of all...
Paul Wills?
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. Before, does anybody have an objection to removing the four? And restructuring? No, thank you, I'm sorry.
So we secure the contract with Plant Moran Pressa. He's gonna give us a monthly. And so what we could actually put in there is, once Paul Wills gives the board an update, then I could share that out in a mass email. Take his narrative, send it to everyone on our email server and say, "Here's an update," to keep everyone in the loop. And then what I could do is, I could take the same email, put it on social media for those that are community members but are not getting direct email from us. So that could be a replacement for all of those. As Paul Wills does the update, then I could communicate that update via social media and/or email.
His name is Paul Wills?
Paul Wills from Plant Moran Pressa. He's gonna be our owner of it.
So does anybody have an objection to add in that?
Come in.
Okay, all righty. Along with that, now we still will have outside facility things. You had addressed lockers and signs. So how do we want to talk about facilities that still need to be addressed? About covering under the law?
Well, you have a motion standing that you have an update monthly on ESTER and then you have a facility update. I mean, that is a standing motion until you kill that motion, right? So we could, for example, a PA system. That will, once we get quotes, we present that. That would be a facility presentation. And that is a standing thing, monthly.
And we are still gonna have a SETSEC update until everything's been done?
Yeah, because if you do a roof, if you get a new quote, then prices get readjusted and it doesn't hurt us. If there's nothing to update, then there's nothing to update. But if there's an update, then you want to be informed of it.
So we can add ESTER and what was the other one?
Well, it's already a standing, I understand. Yeah, so you have an ESTER update through Edwina Hill. And then you have a facility update slash SETSEC update through a facility, which is Lawrence Miller.
So we can add those. Well, they're not yours, but that's not your goal. We need to be specific about what our expectation is with you. So I don't want to complicate or cross those lines. But I still think in the end, Mr. Urban, would it be unreasonable to put the Plant Moran update even though?
Well, your goals are your long-term, big-picture expectations of the superintendent. So the question really is, how does that relate to your long-term, big-picture goals of the superintendent in terms of what you're gonna evaluate against? And your goals are your own, but I just urge you to think big picture, long-term. What are you gonna evaluate the superintendent against? What is the valuation of that?
Now in plain English.
Your goals are getting very granular.
Got it, okay.
Ms. Holder?
Yes, go ahead, Trustee Chambliss.
Would it be appropriate to maybe put, and Mr. Duhon, are we still doing the building walkthroughs like every month that Jamie had mentioned would be happening after the tour? And maybe, since we're taking so much of this away, but we don't want to just not have goals for the facilities since that's how things have been, you know, happening. Maybe we could put that he will ensure the building walkthroughs are performed. He will make sure the Board of Education has supplied that. Since he's our employee and they're his, he's just doing a soup. Maybe that goal is more supervisory. Just ensuring that the board gets those things so that they don't get dropped off by anyone else.
Or ensure that we are updating. Because I think especially with the Plant Moran and the SETSEC to board, we can get that out to the board. Okay, any objection, Mr. Duhon?
You just said you want to ensure. So here's what I would have done from my notes. Have monthly update email to parents and community members based on the feedback from Paul Wills. And then ensure that you're updated. But I don't know, is that monthly, weekly? Because I heard different discussions.
Why don't we do it monthly? And if there's nothing to update, then...
On facilities and? Facilities in what? Facilities, okay.
Yeah, which is the ESTER, the SETSEC, and just overall facility status? Any projects or anything?
Okay. Wait. So that's where I got confused. So facilities, and then you threw in ESTER, you kind of threw me before a loop. Ensure you're updated monthly on facilities.
Right, I was saying, because Ms. Holder had said, "How would we put them?" Because Dr. Hill does the ESTER and Lawrence does the facility SETSEC update. So I said, "Because they're your employees and your hours, like you need to do it as more of a supervisory thing. So you're just gonna ensure that they get those. So if they don't update us, you'd be coming to them and saying what's going on." It's just ensuring that your employee does.
Okay. Sure, and you're updated monthly on facilities and ESTER updates.
Which we really are, basically, every month. So is this just repetitious in his goals?
Well, that's what we're talking about.
Okay, I was just saying. But we get updated every month on ESTER and on facility by...
My concern really, just to share, was the news of the Plant Moran. The improvement updates, because I agree with Trustee Chambliss. We need to be showing our good news to the public. But, and keeping the public up to date. And then Mr. Duhon is right, the ESTER and the SETSEC is already being covered on our agenda. So I think that maybe we can remove those two. We've already addressed those, posed that.
So take off the last thing.
Because they are already there. They won't be your job, they will still be their job.
So I tweaked a little bit based on what I'm hearing. Half-monthly updates, email to parents and community members based on Plant Moran's monthly presentation. And any improvement updates to basically, like you said, shout them out, "Hey, we're getting new lockers," or "Hey, so people could get excited on some developments." Is what I heard you guys say.
I get the objection, some say, "Hey, we're getting new lockers." When we get them, say, "Hey, you have to come see our lockers."
And once we have them?
Right.
Once we have them.
And today is our kind of walkthrough. As we think about these, we may decide that they need to be tweaked just a tad. But I think this is a good walkthrough. And then if Mr. Urban decides that we need to tweak this anymore, he can let us know. Okay, anything else as far as facilities goes? No, all right, move on to curriculum. Says, "Improve and update curriculum. Develop curriculum committee process with timelines for updates in certain areas. Develop summer school reviews, special ed, 504, advanced placement plans as needed. Continue implementation of K-3, 5, ELA. Continue development of K-5 math curriculum. Explore new curriculum, including electives for MHS." So what's our initial input for curriculum?
Madam President, Trustee Thompson, develop curriculum committee. Have we done all of them?
Mr. Duhon?
Yeah, that's when the buildings set up a curriculum development team. And they get a whole bunch of different textbooks sent to them. They review, and then they go with a pilot. That's what they did with the K-5. And once you pick one out before you made the $100,000 investment, what we did is we piloted it for a year. We liked it, curriculum team then made a recommendation. Then I presented the recommendation to the board. The board approved it, now they're implementing it.
Anybody else have any input? Can you, Mr. Duhon? Maybe we'll start with you. Are there any of these that it says, "Continue with implementation of..." I know that we will always be striving to, for curriculum, in mass. But as far as K-5 ELA, K-5 math curriculum, I thought that we addressed some of that, so can you update us?
Yep, so right now, the committee for the high school is making their recommendation to me. They have one more meeting and then we will fully be completed with that. K-5 has a five-year, remember when you took action, it was a five-year. So they continue to give me feedback and updates on that. They continue to assess. So I would say, whether you have that as a goal or not, they're gonna continue with the K-5 ELA, K-5 math. I would keep new curriculum, including the electives for MHS, because I do want them, for example, they don't have physics at the high school. And so I met with the team, I said, "You know, how do we not have physics? We need that, we need a computer teacher, we need some more electives." Right now, they have gym, and they have art, and they have a little bit here and there, but they're not fully competitive. So I would say, keep that, because we really need to grow the electives. Not only at the high school level, middle school, at the middle school level. So I would add, I would keep that, but I would add, explore new electives at the middle school. The 504, that's already in place. Summer school was a huge hit last year. We're duplicating that, you saw that in my update. That was a huge hit. We already started meeting and developing summer school. We'll be ready to present it at the next, at the May board meeting, but June 27th to July 29th will be it. And I'll be prepared to discuss that on my superintendent's report in a minute.
So am I hearing you right? We can remove, develop summer school, and feel that's been accomplished?
Yeah.
Any input from anybody?
So, yeah, Trustee, so basically we can either remove 135 or just curriculum committees. Mr. Duhon, somebody already had this in place. Summer school, he's already worked on that. Special ed, home, 504. Should that still be on there, or is that a continuous?
I mean, it's done. 504 is a legal document that has to be reviewed every year.
Is it done by the superintendent, or normally it might not be?
The special education director. And then the building principal oversees the 504. They're the person responsible for that.
With our special ed?
Mr. Andre, he does also our cleaners, roofing.
Trustee Chambliss, go ahead.
I think removing the ones that don't necessarily call Mr. Duhon probably make it easier to like fine-tune as to what we do need. So he doesn't do the special ed 504, Mr. Andre does that. So I would remove that one. I recommend moving that one. And then the curriculum committee, they've already done that, so I would get rid of that. And the summer school, they have a plan last year. We're, they're repeated, I would remove that one also.
Okay, so remove 1, 2, and 3? Any argument there or not argument, discussion?
4 and 5, I guess that's done as well.
4 and 5 is done as well? Or because they're still in development, do we want to...
No, they're implementation. Their request is continued.
It said continue, that's why I was asking. So do we want to keep 4 and 5 or take them out?
Well, it says continue development. They've already been validated, they're making 5 and in the process.
All right, so we have leave 5, then leave 6. Is that fine with everybody? Yes?
5 is done.
That's why she said, take it out.
Oh, take it out, oh, okay.
They said leave 5 and 6.
Sorry, sorry. Maybe I counted wrong.
That one was, uh, continue development, so that's done?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So explore the curriculum that we have.
For MHS, and it was suggested, new electives for the middle school.
Yeah.
Explore, um, new electives for the middle school. Is this?
Middle school and high school, this says high school.
Right, and we're gonna add the one that didn't say for Wilkinson High School. So, right now, unless there's some objection, there would definitely be two. And then, anything that we wanna talk about from that point on? Any other suggestions? I, I do have a couple of questions, only because I'm trying to stay within the goals, they need to be specific, they need to be measurable, they need to be achievable, and they need to be linked to a time frame. And, and one thing about the curriculum that I know all of us have discussed at one time or another, um, what about looking at, at spending or becoming a trade center kind of school? We need to have a book that no one else has.
Oh, like our, um, like robotics, or, or like the machinery and stuff?
Trustee Chandler, go ahead.
We used to, um, my daughter Ashlyn, who's a senior now, her freshman, sophomore, junior year, they had an amazing robotics team. It was taught, taught by Mr. Fols and Mr. Patterson. And they would do competitions, and it was very extensive, and the kids, I mean, the kids were really into it, and they even had it at Wilkinson, and then also, teachers and parents had started one at the elementary. It was very like beginner, but it kind of phased up as they went. So we used to have a really great robotics team.
We don't anymore.
They didn't have robotics this year, um, and then last year, then early with COVID and everything, but this year they haven't had any either.
Did we lose the robotics teacher?
We lost Mr. Fols, we lost Mr. Patterson, and then we lost Ms. Curran. So, I think it's the staffing, getting a staff member to do it.
So I guess my question today, while we're in discussion, is, um, is adding new electives to the middle school and the high school, is that specific enough for us, or for Mr. Dula had? Uh, this is input time, so. Go ahead, Mr. Holton.
Yeah, once, uh, the roof gets fixed over there at the high school, I'd like to see all the machines, all the air and the shop glass, and listen, try to get that fired up, that'd be nice. Get a teacher.
We could, I'm sorry.
Good, no, go ahead.
We could potentially just say, like, I don't know, one new elective, first building, you know, starting in the fall, and another one in January, whatever, like, we could give, it must be measurable, we could say either, like, two, or one, or whatever, new electives to be started and implemented and running in the fall, just so we do have something new to say for kids coming in September.
Mr. Dula had? What's your response to that?
I think that, that is measurable. Um, I would, you know, um, I mean, I have all these ideas I'm trying to gather, because I, I know what we should, we could be doing, is, what we could be, what we should be doing, um, it's hard with teaching staff, but there's always different ways. We're going, we're going to three job fairs, uh, in the next two months. Um, statewide job fair that we're gonna try to recruit, um, the superintendent's rights is also in one of them, because we're trying to get them, steal them from other people, and as we try to steal people from other people, uh, other districts, they do likewise, but I think that's measurable, adding one new elective. If, if we add more, great. There's nothing wrong with adding more than, than one, but one is measurable, you could say, did you do it, did you not do it? I would like to do more, but one is good, and if we have three, then great, three, three's better than one.
Trustee Thompson.
Do we have languages? Do we teach languages?
Spanish only.
Just Spanish?
At the high school only.
Not, nothing in the middle school?
Nor elementary.
They did, I do know that for the Spanish at the middle school, they did work so hard trying to ensure someone, and they actually had a couple people that were like on, about to get onto the onboarding process, and they dropped out and went somewhere else. So I know that Spanish, because that was a huge issue, um, that we did lose kids for. Uh, I know families that pulled for that reason, because there were limited classes for Spanish at the high school. And so if a child cannot, or student cannot fit into Spanish at the high school, they might get pushed over to Adventum, where they're learning languages like German through a computer. No teacher. I mean, they have a computer teacher, but they don't teach the language, like, they can help with the program, but they can't tell, you know, help them enunciate or anything like that. So, um, a lot of students like to get Spanish one out of the way in eighth grade that way, when they go to ninth grade, they write the Spanish two, and it kind of lightens up the load a little bit. And Wilkinson didn't make sense of the surface, and they couldn't, but getting languages would be a huge thing for this district. But I do know that Mr. Dula had and Mr. Whitman did work really hard on that, so that's something.
Do we still utilize present?
Yeah.
Because they, you know, my kids took Japanese and calculus.
Okay.
And calculus and...
So I, I'll share something. I don't wanna let all the, all the stuff out of the bag before May second, but, uh, in our planning for summer school, we're trying to create some opportunities for incoming ninth graders to get some classes out of the way, some elective classes out of the way during the summer, Spanish being one of them. Right, so if an incoming eighth grader that's going into ninth grade could take Spanish in the summer, we already have the teacher, but she worked summer school last year, then guess what? That's one year out, already out of the way before you even set plan to the high school. So I don't wanna let everything out, because that, that's what I end up doing, I'd like to have a, a nice package deal for you guys too, but we're, we're trying to find some options. Um, Spanish is, having only one language really is not even the norm, is less than the norm.
Well, and I guess I just wanna add, um, the, the passion for a trade school kind of thing, we need, we need kids, we need kids that wanna be here, and, um, not everybody's gonna go to college, um, and I think all of those things that we've been saying for years are still true, and if that needs to be our niche, to entice or, you know, uh, engage people to wanna come here, um, I, I think, I don't know how, I don't know, I don't know how to say this, and, and not sound impolite, and so I'm, I, because I'm not trying to be impolite. I don't know what else, or what effort can be made to try to, at least make, um, part of that work at the high school. I know people have talked about, um, trucking school. I have no idea what the trucking school would be, um, but there has to be something out there that we can have, that others can't, and it's gonna take work, and, and I'm here to say, I feel that we would support you to get the people that you need to do that, if that's what it takes for all of us to be successful.
California just, it was on the news a few months back, started a truck driving school through their high school. It was a huge success. You know, this, like, why do they make that? Mr. Alden?
Do we know how many students are gonna go to the operators and engineers open per day?
I think less than four.
Less than four.
At middle school. I don't know the numbers at the high school.
All right, well, if we can't get a full bus, is there any way we can reach out to the neighboring schools, invite them, some of their students?
Well, they would sign up on their own, I mean, every district could register and go.
They could, but they, I don't know, because they all know about it, just like we didn't know about it.
You were advertising there.
I, I think, so here's my response to, to your suggestions. We don't have the bare minimum to run a normal high school currently, and although the ideas are wonderful on trades and truck driving, we don't even have enough to meet the graduation requirements. He said we don't have enough for physics at the high school, physics, and we're exploring trade. We really need to hone in on building your foundation. Your foundation right now is a sound high school, with sound electives, CASAS taking care of the advanced classes, OTech is taking care of all the other stuff at zero charge, zero charge, and OTech is not, they just closed a few programs because they're more successful, and that's OTech. So our niche can't be something that OTech itself was not successful at doing, and they were not successful at, so what makes us think that we could be better and more organized than OTech?
I guess, it, this is my thought, we don't have to create a whole school around it, even just a couple of classes, one or two, but the thing is, we need to get our kids back, and just having, um, physics, I don't know is enough of a draw. We need to get our own kids back, or at least some of them. Um, I'm not here for claiming to know, I'm just saying, um, we need to have something that's a little different than everybody else, um, and...
Correct. Correct enrollment?
So, today, today is our lawthor. Nothing's gonna be done in, in cement today, but I think if there's any suggestions or ways that, that we could look at something small, it doesn't, we aren't building a system out, we're just trying to attract our kids. Oh, uh, Mr. Urban, go ahead.
Oh, Trustee Chandler said something.
Oh.
Okay, you go ahead, it's okay.
Oh, it's okay, you know, if enrollment is your, your thing, you know, you can leave the details up to the superintendent and say something like, undertake measurable efforts to increase enrollment by adding classes, electives, languages, or other innovative program. That way you leave the details up to the superintendent, and your goal is to increase the enrollment.
Okay.
If that makes sense. And then, with, with, with regard to the superintendent saying, look, we need basic classes, we need physics. If, if having a fulfilled basic bread and butter, a miserable program increases the enrollment, and adding that physics class does that, then he's achieved that goal. Um, and the board doesn't have to kinda try to juggle what the curricular nuances are with the various children. I don't know if that makes sense to the board or to the superintendent, but that's kinda how I view the discussion right now.
Go ahead, Trustee Chandler.
I, I just wanna write it down.
Oh, yeah, after.
Oh, so I was gonna say that M A S B sent out, um, during the, the, like, training, they said that the best careers for the 21st century are healthcare, but not necessarily your doctors, it's the R M, it's the administration, the mental health professionals, physical therapy, technology, so robotics, advanced computer classes, things like that, um, business and professional services. We could have teachers, you know, teaching these things, human resources, things, uh, public relations, um, entrepreneurship. And so, we were like, well, what makes those the best careers? They're not the highest paying, they're the ones that are guaranteed to have a job. So, oh, but if you do want a high paying job, the, right now, the biggest profession that is booming is veterinarians, but that specialize in chiropractics. You walk out of school at a hundred and fifty thousand a year. So, we can kind of look at what the big, you know, draws are gonna be, and maybe build our school to be more focused on, you know, helping with all the diversity of classes, that'll be huge classes, and maybe we can find a way to combine a couple classes, but if we can add them, we can promote that, and that might be what people come for, because I would, as a parent looking for a new school district, I would've gone to a district that said, we're focusing on your child as a human being, not as just a, a child in a seat, you know, we're trying to advance them for what comes next. I teach my children how to address the ladder, to do the things for life skills, the things that they're gonna benefit them after high school, that might be what does it, because you're right, we do need physics. My daughter was just complaining that we didn't have physics. So, I do think you're right on that, but I also think we focus on them as post-high school. Not necessarily if it has to be a trade, but just something that, you know, they can kinda go towards, it'll draw them, because they'll be interested, and they'll wanna be here.
So, you wanted that, undertake measurable efforts to increase enrollment by adding classes, comma, electives, comma, languages, or, and I think this gets the last point, increased pro, innovative programs. That way, if enrollment is your goal, you're letting them know an increased enrollment, and, and, you know, I, I'd suggest increased enrollment rather than picking a number, because Michigan, as we know, across boards, loses kids. So, um, then the efforts are what's measurable, not necessarily pulling kids out of your hat, if that makes sense.
What does everybody think of that? Yes, 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 Trustee.
I wrote what you said.
Oh, okay. And, Mr. Dula had?
Yeah, I'm just jotting down the notes.
All right.
And I'll produce something for you guys.
Next up, policies. Uh, first one, update district, uh, district policies and administrative guidelines. Continue review and approval process for policy sections with board. Develop administrative guidelines for applicable each section. Develop process for implementation of policies and guidelines with administrations. So we are at the policies part. And, um, first of all, continue review and approval process for policy, policy sections with the board. We all have been lassened doing that, and we are hoping that a second board meeting a month is going to address that, but it isn't done yet, so should we leave it?
I, I say keep all of it.
Okay. Um, then, anybody have a disagreement with keeping all three? No? Anybody have anything that they wanna talk about in any policy? Hearing none for right now, we will leave it as it stands, move on to administrative. Complete various administrative projects. Develop and encourage in bargaining process with union groups, sale and charter agreement with keys. Develop plan for return to school in fall. Hire and retain staff. Develop reporting mechanism and rubric for accomplishments.
Chairman President? Uh, Trustee, go ahead. You can remove number two, say on the charter, remove keys.
Anybody disagree? No? Okay, that one's easy.
And I, I would just say continue for number one, develop and engage a bargaining process with union groups, that's already been done, so I would just change that to continue. That's already been done, so I would just change that to continue.
And develop plan for return to school and fall. That, is that an exception because of COVID?
Yeah, so we, we.
So remove number three. Hire and retain staff, will that be your job when we get a H R person?
Yeah, I'm the final, like, interviewer and, and make recommendations. So they go through a process, so we interview and then it goes to the second level.
Should we not leave this?
Yeah, I would, I would say.
Because that's really what I was asking about, you know. Develop reporting mechanism and rubric for accomplishments. And is that for your accomplishments or the, um, I, I really haven't seen here, and I guess we kind of were remiss in that student growth and student knowledge is, is measured, unfortunately, with standardized testing. But we somehow or another missed all this. We definitely need to, to look at that. Is that really administrative? Or something that we need to look at another place? So if you could first clarify for me, are you talking about your, your accomplishments? The rubric for your accomplishments or the district's accomplishments?
Well, I mean, I think that two go hand, hand in hand together. I think the student growth piece legally is 40%, it has to be. So I am a reflection of the administrator's staff. The teachers are a reflection of, the administrators are a reflection of the teaching staff. The teaching staff is a reflection of the students. I mean, that's, that's how that would get the student growth piece. So development reporting mechanisms, to me, when I, something is done, I send you an update in, in the week, Sunday Weekly Update. We're completed this or we're nearing completion. For example, curriculum after the high school makes their recommendation now be done. That way you're aware of it as, as things come out. That's what I think about, about reporting mechanism of accomplishments. I don't, I think, my brain had wrote it that way, but.
No, that's fine. I just want everybody to be clear on what the expectation is and what we're talking about. So what do we have to say? Anybody have input? Just continue with whatever. So instead of saying, "developings," continue reporting?
Continue reporting.
Is that, okay with everybody? Trustee Chambles? Trustee Ak?
Yes.
It looks like we might be at the end of this meeting.
Do you want, do you want to talk about in, in here, any kind of planning for the future?
And, and that's what, yes, if you would like to add that, I think that that would be permanent, especially. We should have a budget plan, and I knew at some point we're going to work on that too.
Do you like the idea of having different companies present you their strategy for strategic planning? Or do you want to just go with one? My recommendation is, let me give you two or three. Let them present to you and you pick the one you guys like. Because I know M A S B does one, but M L I does one. And I'm not sure if Clark Hill does strategic planning presentation. But if we present three or four, then you could say, this is the one we like.
Everybody on board with that?
Yeah.
So present three or four.
Yeah. And can you just tell us, I know, I meant to ask, I forgot, uh, back, where are we at with the administrative guidelines? I know we bought them, but is the update?
So I'm liking in that whole area policy thing. I think having two meetings would really help, help me hyper-focus on it. We bought them, we have them. But I really need to take the time to go over the board policies to see how I would apply each one and then share that out with the others.
Because that's important, and so many of our policies are based on that.
Yeah.
So to not have it.
We have some, but we don't have a, all of it. And so administrative guidelines is all of it.
Just wanted to touch base on some of that. Uh, Trustee Chambles, go ahead.
So I know that we bought the Neola guidelines, but is it possible that we could consider, how often do we renew those?
Are you talking about administrative guidelines or policies?
I'm talking about Neola, like, how often we.
Policies.
Yeah.
So you're talking policies. Remember, well, you weren't here, but in 2019, when I was appointed, the district had paid for five years and never utilized them. So what Neola said is, hey, we'll give you those hours free because we were never allowed in your district. So we're like, all right, so they've been working with us. Technically, they have not charged us. I, I say, let's fully utilize all that money that we paid for. And then if you don't like it, then, but right now it doesn't hurt us to continue utilizing Neola, because you've been paying for it. Or they paid for it in the past.
When we go to renew them, could, could we possibly get presentation or examples or something from Miller Johnson or another company? Neola has some policies that are missing and they're big ones. There's some blatant ones. But, so I think that something we might want to consider is other companies, because there are ones from Neola missing that if we do get those situations, which I highly, 100% don't think will happen, but if we do, we don't have a policy for it. So we're good till 2024 on Neola?
I believe so, but I, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Clark Hill has policies?
Yeah, I feel like every law firm has them.
What's that?
Miller Johnson does, Clark Hill does, Trune does, Neola does. I think those are probably the four big ones.
So if you're saying you want a presentation on all the different policies, that would, you guys would have to tell me, present something, but my recommendation is use the money that you already paid for. And if you don't like it, then change after you get your money's worth.
Right, and I'm not saying we have to spend any more money. If we're getting, like, free service for nothing, yes, let's utilize that. When it comes time to redo, just possibly considering some of the other companies, just because there are big policies missing with Neola.
Yeah, that's, this is a decision the board, we just apply whatever you guys adopt. You tell me you want presentation, I will give you three or four present, you know, presentations. I just need to know that when the time's right.
I'm asking for that, but whatever the majority says, I just, there are missing things with Neola.
Trustee Thompson?
And I, I think we talked about it in the past, creating committees amongst the board. Where we sit down and go, there's a lot of policies in that book that are outdated. There's a lot of policies we can't do anything with because they're law. But some of the policies and some of our bylaws are just so outdated, they need to be tweaked. And we just haven't done it. And now that we're doing two.
Two meetings, I think that would be helpful.
I think we can get that done now.
Can we tweak the Neola bylaws? I mean, that's policies.
Laws.
Policies.
Yeah. It's not a law we can't.
So.
Our bylaws are our bylaws, right? And those are outdated.
The policies, the way Neola writes them, they support them legally.
Right.
Right? So the way it is written. I think having the two meetings a month. One, we have to go through them, adopt them, and then if something we don't like, then we could ask legal, can we adjust this one to fit our needs? And then legal will say, yes, you can do this, or no, in order to be protected. You know, but I would say, I, I like that, let's start with the policies. And if we're very successful in the two meetings, then we can start breaking off into different committees. As we continue to grow, then we can break up.
For four years, that we need to go through that book.
So, so as I look at the five of us that are here, knowing two are not here, do we concur that we feel comfortable with what we've done today? If the other two have any input or recommended changes?
Wouldn't you have a person with his hand?
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I didn't know you were wrapping up, but I was, I was, I was thinking about facilities for a second. And I don't want to re, I don't want to reinvent the wheel, but I was thinking about how to consolidate that into something that's achievable by the superintendent, but doesn't bury you guys or the superintendent in detail.
Okay, go ahead.
And I just, I had two points I came up with that I, I just want to try on with you guys to think about it. One would be, inform the board and the public regarding the status of school facilities monthly. I think that picks up all the stuff you guys were talking about in terms of what's going on at the school, what's going on at the facilities. And then second, communicate major improvements to the public promptly. That gets to your lockers thing, or the roofing thing, or things along those lines. I think those are things that you can measure the superintendent doing. But also, you know, it doesn't get you in the weeds over whether this was an ESF project or this was a, you know, another project or how that works. So just something to think about for either now or for the next time you do it, just making it a little bit more measurable and a little bit more broad.
Can you repeat them?
Yeah, just for consideration, number one would be, inform the board and the public regarding the status of school facilities monthly.
Start two more on the board.
Exactly.
We have this, you know.
Of the status of what?
Uh, status of school facilities monthly. Yeah, if you had a flood, you'd tell the board. Yeah, we had a flood.
And what is the second one, communicate something?
The second one is, communicate major improvements to public promptly. That would cover your bond project or sinking fund, anything, new lockers, that kind of thing.
Do we have one thing that one of the two board members that isn't here tonight had wanted to talk about? She was talking partially to us and to the superintendent about, she wanted us all to go to training, get a training. She also wanted to maybe look at the superintendent to, she said, the Michigan Leadership Institute Superintendent Academy or M A S A Superintendent's Leadership Academy. So maybe we can look at these and see if that would be helpful at all to Mr. Dulaad. I wrote down the two that was recommended to her, that has them a lot. So maybe we can all do a little bit of investigating and see whether or not that's something we would want to add.
So I attended the Superintendent's Academy for M A S A, my first year. And then I did, I'm finalizing right now my second year of Horizon's Leadership Academy. So three years, I've, I've done three trainings. Plus I go to the, you know, when I go to those trainings, so that's what I've done so far.
So obviously that was not in permission, that is, so there you go, two-year-old. Uh, Trustee Chambles, go ahead.
So just heads up that the Michigan Department of Education has agreed to reimburse districts for CBA courses for board members. You can get, if all of us take 101 to 109, you become a board certified member. If the entire board does that, we become a board certified board. So it would be reimbursed, it's normally $90 each, and they'll pay us right back for all of those. There's a whole list of them, but the first nine CBAs are covered. And then also I just wanted to say, so they had recommended we possibly consider doing quarterly, like, check-ins with Mr. Dulaad, whether it be open or closed session, I'm not sure. I think they told us closed session, but Mr. Urban would know the more vital of what's actually happening here, so. But a check-in every quarter just to see how he's doing up to his goals, so that he doesn't get to the end of the year and you didn't do this, or you did great at that, he didn't hear all year that he was doing good. So it's kind of like, we get to, you know, praise him, and we also get to, like, tweak things if we need to, to make him more successful and the district more successful.
Mr. Dulaad?
Well, I, I wrote down, I thought, what I heard you say is continue reporting with weekly update on goals in my Sunday, I thought that's what I heard you guys say. And you get that every week instead of every three months. You get that every week from me.
I think the quarterly is more like, so we go back to you about how we are seeing everything. It's more like a mini eval, it's not really a eval, like, we sit and it can be closed session where we just say, hey, you're doing really great at this, or it was just a recommendation, they said it's a way to keep superintendents in the loop of how the board is seeing their work on a more frequent basis versus just waiting to the end of the year and it being all plopped on at once.
I am full confidence that the board will communicate if they're not happy with me about something. I don't think the board will wait three months to let me know if they're not happy about something. I am 100% confident they'll let me know.
Any, anything else? Mr. Dulaad, do you have anything else?
Um, no, I, I wrote down the notes. What I'd like to do is share them with all of you. And then if that's something that you all like, then I could put it on the agenda. I'll talk to Mr. Urban, I'll, I'll share those, I'll share those with Rod and you guys. But I try to take all the notes of what you discussed and whatever the board. One thing that I do like here, that one of the principals of Wilkinson said almost 50 years ago, if it's good for kids, then it's good. And I was just walking around, I'm like, I've never noticed that. Saying that, he said 50 years ago, if it's good for the kids, then it's. Who?
Was it Decker?
Um, he's pictured right here at the wall, he's in the middle. Yeah, yes, from 70, 75. I mean, and he said, so to me, if it's good 50 years ago, it's good now, if it's good for the kids, then it's good.
Was Decker the supervisor that we out to pretend?
It's in Wilkinson here.
Okay.
Right when you walked.
But one was, what's more, one was a sister. We always had both, in the 30 years I was in the district for high school and middle school. I don't know why it was that, I guess money.
Well, I mean, you had five, 600 students at Wilkinson, both, both sides of M A M C and Wilkinson was all full Wilkinson at that time.
Our correctional class was over seven.
Yeah, and you had 1,400 at one time at the high school, right?
Yeah.
1,200. So can I wrap up now? Then we don't want the Jenny and the Alex late, we're going to try to make this meeting next. But we're going to get these notes to all of us. If there's any input from the two that aren't here, they will let you and I know. And then we can look at a final version of this so that we have a new, more current working model. Everybody's in agreement?
Sounds good.
Thank you for coming tonight, it was important that we get this done, and I appreciate everybody's time. And with that.
President Holder? Sorry, I'd like to make a host to a jury.
Thank you, go ahead.
I got you.
We need a second.
I'll say it.
You were ready, you were ready.
Roll call, try to give us that.
Rebecca Chambles?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambles?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark. Deborah Ahn?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Osha Pass is adjourned meeting at 8:27 PM.
Now we hit the track, just because of the, all right. Thank you, everybody, it's coming tonight.
Way to come together, guys. Great job, great job. I may maybe home.
Yes, there's a meeting course that we took over the weekend. I really should be here for Debbie's. What you do is before you go to the class, you take.
What you do is, before you go to the class, she takes a 15-minute survey online, asks a few questions. And then she can try to report and type.
I used to recognize that.
And then shows you, like, your leadership, and then shows you how to be with each other.